First thing up is any comments from the public, non-agenda items only. If it has something to do with what we're discussing tonight, this is not bad. Do you have anybody with any comments, non-agenda?
Speak up, please.
I'm sorry, we didn't hear you.
This is the time where if there's any comments on non-agenda items only. If it has to do with what's in the paper, it here way it seems to have, then this is not the time, and we'll have that time later on. This is non-agenda items only. Anybody?
Does anybody upstairs have questions for non-agenda items?
Mr. Chair, would you like me to read the admonishment?
I would.
This evening's hearing is a quasi judicial hearing authorized and required by--
Could you stand up, please, so we could hear you? Sorry, I couldn't get a microphone, I did try.
This hearing is a quasi judicial hearing authorized and required by ORS Chapter 197 and 227 and by the Lakeview Ordinance Number 782, known as the Planning Ordinance and specifically the Development Code, which establishes rules for public hearings. The criteria for the subject application are set forth in the staff report, which is in the packet. Persons participating in tonight's hearing must direct their testimony, arguments, and evidence toward the criteria identified in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue will likely preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. And failure to raise constitutional or other issues will likely preclude appeal on those issues. The record for the subject application includes all materials in the packet prepared for tonight's hearing, plus additional timely filed written testimony and oral testimony made during the evening's proceedings. Don, was there any other filed materials today?
No, just-- we have--
Thank you. So long as order will be maintained, the Chair will conduct the hearing informally and substantially as follows. Individuals speaking on their own behalf will-- the applicant will have 10 minutes to present their case. Individuals speaking on their own behalf will have 3 minutes for their own testimony and 5 minutes if you're representing a group. And if you're representing a group, please identify the group. The hearing will proceed. Staff will provide a report that explains the basics of the proposal, identifies and discusses the criteria. If appropriate, staff may include a recommendation, and there is a recommendation for presenting matter. If the town attorney is present, he will address the commission. I don't believe the county attorney is here, correct? Next, the applicant who has the burden of proof and his or her representatives will make an introductory statement and address the criteria to explain why the proposal or other relief should be granted. Persons who support and-- who are present and support the application will be heard next, followed by persons who oppose the application. Questions may be directed to those testifying through the presiding official, the Chair. Following that, any interest of public agencies or utilities, if they are here, will be heard. Lastly, the applicant or their agent will have opportunity to provide final rebuttal if they so wish. Final rebuttal should also be limited to 10 minutes. And then, at that point, the Chair will close the hearing and the commission will deliberate to a decision. Are there any questions about that? So the next part is commissioners, do you have any ex parte-- have you had any ex parte contact or any conflicts of interest that you wish to declare? Seeing none. And so, the hearing tonight is a quasi judicial hearing on land division and site design review, planning file number 788. The property is located within the residential multifamily sub-district R-MF. The applicant proposes land division-- or the applicant's proposed land division is to replat lots 1 through 24 of Block 93 in the Oregon Valley Land Company's first addition to the town of Lakeview. The proposed replat would take those 24 lots and essentially consolidate them and turn them into two parcels of land, one north and one south. Also submitted is a site design review for construction of two multiple-family dwelling projects on the two replatted lots. The proposed multifamily dwelling project consists of a three-story apartment building with 17 units on one lot, which is the southerly lot, and five duplex units for 10 dwelling units total on the second lot. The approval criteria is in the staff report and is Section 4.2.600 of Site Design Review Criteria and 4.3.14, which is the criteria for preliminary plat of the town of Lakeview. The application is made by BB Development LLC. And the property does not have an address because it is-- it doesn't have any vertical development on it.
So, for us folks here, could you describe exactly where those are?
We can pull up the vicinity map.
Show us-- show us exactly what the location is.
Yep.
There's a-- Jay?
Yeah.
Chairman, there's a-- there's an aerial photo.
I know, I'm trying to get the sound to work for upstairs. Sorry, I'm working on it.
There is a photo.
What page in the documents we have?
The photo-- the photo is probably not. The vicinity map is in the documents you have.
That's hers. They asked upstairs if we could board off for a minute because they're trying-- I'm trying to get this in and they can't hear.
It's hard to get through, I go on like 5 pages at a time.
It's not me, it's our internet. Don, it's been spotty all day.
Excuse me, is there a chance we could hear all your names? You could introduce yourselves?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm Greg McCully, acting chair for tonight.
Could you please stand up so we could hear you? Thank you.
Greg McCully, acting chair for tonight.
Jay Harland, I'm the town staff planner.
Derek Dunn, I'm on the planning commission.
Kevin Sims.
Ronnie Lindsay, planning commission.
Don McQuarrie, town reporter.
I'm Mark McKeckney with Oregon Architecture. We are the design architects for the Freedom House, head of this project.
Shane Joseph, Oregon Architecture as well.
What was that again?
Shane Joseph?
Uh-huh.
Oregon Architecture.
Are all the planning commissioners present?
No.
Why not?
I have no clue.
Family emergency for two of them?
Pete Fortune, I'm on the planning commission as well.
Well, you can see and hear us now? Okay, she can hear us and see us now.
He's just looking.
Yeah, he's pulling up the area.
So the question was, where is the project?
Yes.
Right, and so, this is Third Street here. This is U Street. Here. It's the one west of S. And it's this block. So it's on this block here, right, of that area. So this is-- New Mexico Avenue is what it's called, but it's been vacated. It's no longer actually a city right of way. And there also used to be a-- there also used to be an alley here that was vacated. So this is--
Directly across from the baseball fields.
Correct.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So is that T-ball where all the little kids are at? Yes. Up the street is the schools, correct? Yes. It starts out with T-ball and works its way up.
So you can-- now that they know, you can pull-- can you put the site plan back out?
Sure.
Hey, that's my address.
With that, would you-- would you like staff report?
I would.
So, like I said, describe the project. The project is essentially a duplex project on the north portion and then the south portion is an apartment building project. When staff initially reviewed the application--
Your turn, I can't hear, I'm sorry.
Sorry, when staff initially reviewed the application, the initially submitted materials, there were a couple of issues, one of which was the-- the town has a code that you're not supposed to put parking between-- the parking between the street and the proposed buildings. And so, the site plan was redesigned for the-- for the duplex part of the project to make it so that the parking is now on the side, which sort of created more of a courtyard area. In the-- there was a courtyard before, but I also have parking, so now the courtyard is separated from the parking. And then the units are duplexes that meet all of the town's standards for duplexes as there is-- based upon the staff review, we didn't see any issues with that.
I'm sorry, you turn your head and look this way and I can't--
Could you please stand up? None of us back here can hear you.
I'm sorry.
I know you don't have a microphone, I know it's not your fault, but--
Understood. So what I was saying is the-- the-- is that better? Maybe if I go like in the corner. Is that better?
Maybe let you get up here in front and talk.
How's that? Now you're all that way. Is that good, is that better? Then I got the plans, alright. There you go, thank you. So at any rate, so the initially submitted plans had-- had-- the parking was in the middle of-- and it's sort of part of the courtyard. Staff let the applicant know that didn't comply with the city standards that prohibits parking between-- between the buildings and the city street. So the applicant went ahead and redesigned the site plan, moved the parking to the side, and that resulted in the courtyard now just being an open area and the duplex units being circled around the--
Okay, let's take a breath here. We are going ahead with this building? We're not here to talk--
Can you please hold-- can you please hold your comments till it's that? You will have a time to speak for that. Right now, he's just telling you what the staff has--
I'm telling you what the project is.
Yeah, he's just telling you what the project is. You will have time to have your comments, yes.
Okay.
At the appropriate time.
Yep. So that was on the duplex part of the project. On the other part of the project, which is the apartment building part of the project, initially, the design that came in had it all as one building. And so that was a concern for staff. The town has a code requirement for apartment buildings in the multifamily zone that the buildings not be longer than 80 feet, end wall to end wall. We let the applicant know that. And so they actually did a revised plan that broke the sort of the big building into a couple of buildings. The other issue that we pointed out to the applicant was that the--
Can I ask who the applicant is, exactly?
It's BB Development LLC.
Thank you.
Yes. Which is, yeah, in the staff report and on the application report.
Would you find any information about BB Development anywhere?
You'll have time to ask him questions.
Yeah. The applicant can speak to the entity.
Yes.
So, the-- they're the entity, BB Development. John Kogar is the owner of the property and he authorized the application. Okay, so on that front. So, at any rate, so it came in as one big building. Staff let them know that didn't comply. The other issue that staff identified in the staff report was that so many units-- there's a percentage in the code-- so many units on the ground floor have to have private outdoor-- private outdoor open space. I think all the ones on the ground floor have to have private outdoor open space. And then, 50% of upper floors have to have private outdoor open space. As initially presented, the project had-- there's walkways on the front on the upper floors, and so there wasn't any areas that appeared to meet the private open space outdoor requirement. The applicant's architects revised the project and made changes to it and recommended that-- they're proposing some, what are called some like privacy screens for some of those areas to meet those requirements. That was the one thing that staff identified as something that-- I think it can be-- staff thinks it could be found to meet the code requirements, but that will be something for the commission to decide whether or not those privacy screens really-- really meet the private outdoor open space requirement of the code. So I think that was-- at this point is the main issue that staff identified. The other issues are, I think, dealt with with conditions of approval. There are a number of conditions of approval, both for the replat and for the-- and for the actual site development. One of the big ones being that there's a separation requirement in the code between buildings on the same lot. And it's based upon the height of the building. So there's a condition of approval to confirm that--
Sorry.
It's okay.
I have to do something.
Good?
Yep.
Okay. So the-- there's a code requirement that apartment buildings with buildings on the same lot have to be separated and the separation requirement is based upon-- it's half the height of the combined-- half-- half-- the separation needs to be half the height of the buildings added together, essentially. So, for the-- these appear to meet it, the duplex, they're all spaced at 12 feet and the duplexes appear to be 24 feet based upon the plan-- or 12 feet based upon the plans. So 24 and a half and 12 feet meets it. We don't have a height on that maintenance building and so that would need to be confirmed as a condition prior to building permit issuance. And then-- but then on the apartment building project, they've broken into two and there's a skywalk between the two buildings. But there-- it's currently showed as about 12 feet of separation. Staff calculated based upon the height of that structure that it would need to be, I think, 33 and a half feet. So there is that condition of approval in the staff report. The rest of the conditions of approval are things that-- or the staff recommended conditions of approval are things that staff would characterize as pretty standard. They're things that are really requiring improvements to U Street and improvements to Third Street to bring those up to city standards. They were improved to a certain extent when the RV park was put in, which was actually put in the county and then later annexed into the city. And so, those don't meet town standards, so there are conditions of approval to provide public improvement plans and make the necessary improvements to bring those up to city standards. So--
Can you tell us how big the units are? Do you want to have the one bedroom, two bedrooms?
You'll have time to ask them all that.
And there are floor plans.
Everybody has floor plans in their packets.
Yeah, the floor plans are on-- the floor plans are on--
Do we have to go back to the--
Pages. Yeah, they got cut off. But the page-- it would be pages-- the floor plans of the apartments would be pages 27 and 28. And the floor plans for the duplex--
Excuse me, is the owners and the new owners of the property here tonight?
You'll have to ask the applicant that.
I'm just curious if they're here tonight?
I don't-- I wouldn't know them. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so-- yeah, so that's where the floor plans are. The-- and then the duplex floor plans are-- oh, where are those at? They're in here. I think those were in the original--
I have a question. How many total people do you feel like this-- this project will house? You'll have time to ask that question. There's a process of things here that we have to go by.
So the staff report, though, addresses the density and it meets the density requirements for the multifamily with the 17 units on the south building and 10 units on the 10 units in the duplex area. There's five-- five buildings that are duplexes.
Five buildings, 27 units?
No. No. No, one building that's 17. The southernmost is 17 units and the northern-- the northern duplexes are five duplex units with two units each duplex, so 10. 27 total. Between the two.
And I just found out about this a week ago when I live right next to it?
So, at this point, the staff report is done. Mr. Chair, I would say that the-- like I said, the main outstanding issue is how-- how the commission wants to deal with the private outdoor open space. Based upon our review of the code, the remainder of the proposal satisfies all the applicable development standards of the town. So if-- if the private open space issue satisfies the-- to the satisfaction of the town, then-- then staff's position is that if that's bound to be met, then the site plan and design would meet the development standards of the town and therefore staff would recommend approval. So with that, at this point then, you can open it up to help the testimony.
But part of your description of the plan would include the use and you didn't talk about the use. Is this going to be low rent? Is it going to be homeless? That's part of your description. That's not a question, it's part of the description of the plan. What did you approve?
Yeah, yeah.
So, just so everybody's clear and on the same page here, what we do for the town, we are planning commissioners. That's all we do. We have no clue, no rights, no nothing to say what can or cannot go on the properties. As long as it meets code, as long as it meets the standards, as long as it meets the ordinances with the water, the sewer, the streets, the sidewalks, the architectural end of it, that's-- that is what we have to look at. We cannot-- we do not know any of this information that you guys are asking. And-- I know-- I know none of this.
Without knowing anything?
I know-- I know what you have in your hands. That's what I know. So this is-- this is my job as a planning commissioner. This is my job as a planning commissioner. This would be no different than anybody else going to their job and doing their job. So, this is what we do.
You're a planning commissioner for the town-- for the-- for our county, for Lake County?
No, I'm a planning commissioner for the town.
Okay, for the town, and this is in the town?
This is in the town ordinance, or in the town city limits.
So I could say, hey, I'm going to build this, all my description is perfect.
So, I'll throw this out-- I'm going to throw out something right now because I don't want a big battle tonight. I don't want it. But I can't tell-- I can't tell you who you can or cannot have over for your house for barbecue. I cannot tell anybody what car they have parked in their driveway. I can't tell-- nobody can tell anybody anything. So it's the-- it's the same thing on anybody else's property. And as long as it meets this criteria and they come up with everything that we've put in there that needs to be done--
Well, the they needs to know--
By law, we have to go by it.
Is this government?
I don't-- I have no clue.
One minute, you guys, one person. You're going to have five minutes to speak three minutes.
You've got three minutes to speak.
I'm going to have--
Just wait a minute.
Let me speak to the use. The use review is for apartment building and duplexes. That's-- that's the use review.
For who?
Homeless.
For who?
That part of it--
Lakeview's not that big.
That part of it is not something that is part of the development code, right? In terms of the who. If it's an apartment building, it's an apartment building. That doesn't mean that--
In the town of Lakeview, that we have no jobs, no nothing, and you're going to have this all in. Their job is to, okay, the building. Not what goes in the building.
An example-- an example would be--
Thank you, Cheryl.
An example would be if you have a house that doesn't have a garage, right? And then, you want to add a garage, staff is going to look at it and say, that garage is accessory to the single-family residential use that's on the property. We're going to look at it and say, it meets the setbacks. It doesn't-- it's not taller than is allowed by the code. And then it gets approved because the use is-- is what's evaluated under the zoning district. So you're free to-- that's part of the criteria, you're free to address that tonight. I would encourage you to do so. But things like-- you know, questions, you know, points like, well, you know, what's the income of the people who live here? That is-- would be in these apartments? That is not something that's in our development code. It doesn't mean you can't have an opinion about it and it doesn't mean you can't share it and it doesn't mean you may not like it. But my point is, as what we're doing as staff and what the planning commissions are doing, we don't have-- we have no control over that. And it could change. I can tell you, I've been involved in projects where the owner and what the project was, was one thing and then it got approved and then it turned out you built the same thing, but who was in it was different than what was originally approved. That's just sort of the way the process works. So that part-- so they're limited in terms of what they can do.
I don't want this building, but he's right. What they're doing is--
I understand that you guys have no control over this. I get that now, thank you.
Thank you.
But, who would know? Who would be able to answer?
So you will have-- you'll have your question-- you'll have your time to ask questions. I don't know if these guys might know something. I have no idea, but if there's nobody that-- that is representing them, you know, whoever-- whoever might it be? If there's nobody here representing them tonight, who knows?
So isn't we'll have another meeting then?
The--
So the commissioners?
It would be the town council.
Town council.
So I think-- so I think at this point, what makes sense is to let the applicant-- the next-- the next step in the process is for the applicant to give their testimony. Typically, the applicant will address who the-- who the developer is and who-- you know, some aspects of the sort of what's intended for the project.
So we have to have to bring our own attorneys in here so they can find out what's going on? I live by those little kids playing baseball. Somebody's going to be dead in a ditch. I guarantee it.
But this isn't their job, what they're--
Can I just say something? I ran into John Kogar last weekend.
Hey, hold on, hold on. We're about to get to the part where the public can't speak, okay? Okay, thank you.
Can I clarify just one thing? So this meeting tonight is where you're-- the commission here is going to review the applicant's information and make sure they are-- they've done everything that you've asked them to move to their next step.
Yes, and if they don't-- if they don't do what we ask them and what we say we approve upon this--
Okay, so if--
If they don't-- if they don't do that, then they don't get approved. But, you know, most-- 99% of the time, yes, they do what we ask and they--
I already told them once, there were some things that needed to change.
So tonight is just whether they meet the code, whether they meet the ordinances, whether their plans meet what they need to meet to put a building on a piece of property.
So for the rest of us, we could actually just absorb all the information and there will be an opportunity for all of us to speak up on our concerns--
Yes.
--that are not related to what you guys can deal with at all.
Yes, yes, okay.
Okay.
So we're about to open up--
Right after-- so the applicant's going to get their chance to say their words and then everybody that wants to have a chance is going to come up here and you'll have three minutes to ask questions and give your concerns.
But how did it go this far?
You have one second, applicant's going to talk and then everybody can have their opinion and they can bring that up. Just one second, that's all it's going to take. Please.
Yep. Alright. So this time I'll open it up to the applicant to--[1769.23]
He better, it sounds like.
If you wanna hear him, if you wanna hear him tone it down, please.
It sounds like we need to establish a few ground rules here. So, uh, Oregon Architecture, that's the firm that I own, only did the duplexes. So, I can fill you in on all sorts of information about the duplexes, I know absolutely nothing about the multifamily building. So, uh, I can tell you about the duplexes. Uh, they are six hundred square feet aside, they're one bedrooms. Uh, we have done these units, um, three times before in Klamath Falls. I, I don't know what's going on here typically, but in Klamath Falls, they were reserved for veterans. And so, the, uh, the, the units, they, they happen to have been done by the Klamath Housing Authority and they worked with, um, the VFW in, um, Klamath to, uh, find, uh, uh, veterans that lived in the area to move into these things. They also managed them and, um, uh, and so they're, uh, single-story units. They have a little community area, in the case of, of two of the, the projects in Klamath, the VFW works to raise the flag and lower the flag every day. Um, and, uh, you wanna see what they look like? Uh, it's an easy drive and you can see what they are, they're well-managed. I, as far as I know, they have not had any issues. And the people that are in there tend to stay there till they die.
So, that's what, you're saying it's gonna be here? Okay, okay, I mean, why don't I drive over there and look at it?
Well, if you wanna see what the units look like.
We don't have any homeless yet.
I just care what's going on.
You may not, I have no idea.
The address in Klamath?
Uh, let me see, uh, uh, what?
Mark.
I, I may have to send that to, to, uh, council to let it know. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah. It's four forty-one Michigan.
There you are. Thank you. Four forty-one Michigan and. Trail to you.
Is twenty-five oh-three Press Street.
Twenty-five oh-three Press Street.
If you're familiar with where big lots are, it's behind big lots.
Okay, if you have a question about the building, yes.
What was the total cost to build the complex and what's the monthly cost to the taxpayer?
Uh, the, uh, the, um, actually, the total cost of whatever those were is, for this project is irrelevant, but I can tell you that the funding source, excuse me, the funding source comes from grants.
Taxpayer burden?
Well, you've already paid those taxes, so, yeah. I have no idea. Okay, that's. And, um, I, just to add, um, to this, uh, your staff has done an excellent job on review. They were, um, picky to the point, but, uh, you know, the, as far as I could tell, there weren't any issues with Freedom House with the exception of, uh, of a distance between the maintenance shed and the one duplex. And as you can tell by the site plan, we got plenty of room to adjust things if that's an issue. Um, the only other one, and I, Jay, I'm, I'm not real sure if, if, uh, the way these are set up, they're, each unit has a patio in the back and one side of that is a, a storage shed, the other side is open if it needs, if, if, was there an issue with that, needing a privacy fence, is that part of that or not?
Yeah, so the, so, Mr. Chair, the question there, you know, as it relates to the, it was more the apartment building with that design, what meets the private open space, private outdoor space requirement? Um, and whether essentially does it need to be fully enclosed in some way and secured to count? And if that is the commission as it relates to the duplexes, which are really on the back of the unit, right? And so those could be addressed in a variety of ways. Uh, staff is just pointing out like, if, if in fact, you know, the commission would say, hey, to meet that requirement, I think they need to fully enclose them and they need to be sort of secured by the unit, then staff would take the position that a similar condition should be applied to the patios on the duplexes. So, you may wanna, I guess, the question is, is that something that is doable on the duplexes?
Yeah, uh, it's doable, it, it, uh, preferred not to because there's lots of space around the units and it cuts off the back door from whatever could be considered a yard, so.
Right, I mean, that's.
It's not that it can't be done, but I, I think, you know, design-wise and living-wise there would be better if it wasn't.
Yeah, so, but, but if, but if that's gonna be the view of it, then we need to be consistent between, we need to apply the code consistently.
I have a couple people with questions.
We would, we would like to, we would like to go through the whole application first.
Yeah, you'll have, save your, save your questions for the, for the public.
This is about how many people are, are.
So, you'll, you'll, yeah, but you'll, you'll have that chance waiting to, to ask, okay?
I have a question.
You'll have, you'll have a chance to ask in the open public.
Well, we're in public right now.
When the, when it's, when it's time for the public to speak, well.
This is something that's concerning you guys too, because you've got to know, how about the floodplain? If they build units on there, are they going to build up and then is that going to flood the rest of us? We've gone through this before.
Two hundred years' length?
Yeah, and, and I have not.
The floodplain development ordinance was addressed by the applicant and will need to be met as a requirement for building permit issuance, but I think the applicant will probably can speak to that, so.
Did you know there's no working hydrants out there?
Yes, there is. Although we already, that we had already been out and tested them.
They went out and tested them?
Yes, I was out there when they tested them, yes. We went out and tested all of them.
Daryl, do you wanna?
Daryl, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any on our street.
I'm Daryl Anderson, um, Anderson Engineering, I'm here with Carol McCully tonight, a couple of representatives from, uh, um, the applicant. This application was in two parts. Which part was first, Jay?
The replat.
The replat. That area down there is in twenty-five foot lots, it was repl, it was platted originally back in nineteen-ten. Um, since we're putting buildings over many individual lots, building codes and things won't allow, a building to extend over a tax law boundary or other lots. So, the easiest way to get rid of that is to just to get rid of the lot. So, do we have, uh. Basically, it'll replat that half of the block into two parcels. So, there'll be one parcel for the apartment complex and one parcel for the duplexes.
Which one do you want it on?
I'm sorry.
Has this already been done?
The replat?
Yeah.
No.
No.
Oh. Sorry.
I don't see anything on there. Anyway, there's twenty-four, twenty-five foot lots there. This replat will replat them into two parcels. So, that's really a procedural thing, although it does need to be approved by the planning commission. It's not a, it's not dividing land.
Page thirty-nine. It's page thirty-nine of the record.
We're actually consolidating the lots.
Open record.
But the replating has to be approved by the planning?
That's correct. Any land lots changes from the.
Daryl, what did you say happened, of, okay, the replating?
The replat comes to the town planning commission. Yeah, any land division consolidation of the lots.
Is that Kogar before he sells?
He already sold it to the state, he said.
They said Kogar was the owner at the beginning.
They did, but he told me last Sunday he sold it to the state for the money for the.
You can see the twenty-five foot lots on the cap of that block, it's kinda hard to see, but those will basically go away in two parcels. So, that's really, that's really all there is to the, to the replat. The second application was site, site design review, which is required under the town's development code. We can come to that. Bring up the site plan or.
Page number?
Uh, I'm sorry.
I can get it, hold on. That should be right after the replat.
It was the one we had up to start the. The one we had up to start.
I know, it just, my, the, it's not wanting to read this USB address, or his USB.
There we go. Okay, the site designer criteria requires the applicant to make sure that they comply with the.
Page fifty-two.
Town Development Code. So, we go through the list. This is the permitted use on the property. The building setbacks are met, lot area and dimensions are met, we have adequate, uh, lot size for what we're proposing. The residential density, that was mentioned a little bit here, we meet that criteria. The duplex units, as you heard, and then the seventeen units in the larger one on the near Third Street.
And that's just three stories, correct? Three stories?
For veterans?
Again, again, you'll have, you got, everybody will have their time to ask questions, right after this.
One second, we'll have three minutes.
We gotta proceed, we gotta go by the procedure.
So, we meet the lot size, we meet the building requirements, some additional improvements are, are proposed. The west side of U Street, uh, has no curbs and locks, that's part of the proposal, putting curbs and locks on the west side of U.
Hey, guys, please be quiet, they can't hear up here, thank you.
Thank you. Watered sewer are available on-site, water and sewer available on U Street, adequate capacity to meet the needs. There's also an additional sewer for the duplexes that was installed with, uh, um, RV Park that was operational down there.
Are the apartments going to have elevators? No?
I assume so. They don't have elevators?
The veterans have to walk them.
The, the veterans or the duplexes is what they said.
Daryl, I have a question. I live on S Street, so I can look back at that property up there. So, way that's laid out, is it running this way or is it running this way?
Third Street is up and down.
North and south, it's this way. Okay, other things we had to consider as well, the utilities, we're doing the street improvements as I mentioned. We have to have bicycle access, parking access, uh, the total amount of parking requirements were met with the parking lots and we get some credit for on-street parking according to the town's development code. The project has to be landscaped, uh, landscape plans are submitted, those might be revised, but it'll meet the requirements of the town's development code. The site, the buildings are located, um, above the floodplain. Floodplain down there is, is documented by, um, the FEMA. So, we're sloping up to the buildings, street elevations, uh, will not be changed, the existing street, uh, elevations will change. We have storm drainage on South Third Street, which, um, the system will tie into. The north one, the duplexes one on the left, will add some storm drain to tie into an existing drainage system.
Has there been impact studies done?
Yes. This doesn't have a lot of traffic, um.
Everybody, please, please, everybody will have their chance, please. Please, let them have their chance to do their part, please.
Busy as fast as spring we've ever been on.
There was a traffic study submitted, uh, previously to the planning commission.
The water, the sewage, all the impacts, have all of those been done? Is that part of the planning process?
They're not required. There's adequate, there's adequate public utilities to serve the site.
So, the, well, clarification, we had a plan amendment and a rezoning of this piece and the analysis of water and sewer and traffic is part of that. Anderson Engineering provided that as part of that. As part of what we're doing tonight, you're not allowed to apply impacts criteria to permitted residential uses in the zone. Under working law, you're just not. So, we, that came up, but it was addressed through that prior procedure. So, at this point, they still have to make improvements to the site, but as far as off-site analysis and those kinds of things, those are not, uh, criteria for this application at this point.
How does that, uh, how does this project here, uh, affect improving the water system that we have? So, people would argue right now, we don't have adequate utility services with what we have. We have volume, we don't have quality.
The water treatment stuff will be addressed from.
I'm not talking about water treatment, I'm talking about this project right here. So, when we don't have adequate utilities for what we have, how can you add more to what we already have without, without somehow improving what that is?
We have adequate water volumes down there to serve the, to serve the facility.
I said quality. I didn't say volume. It's a, it's a simple question.
It, it, not, but not with a simple answer. Uh, the, the, I mean, the answer to that is if the town was going to basically prohibit development on the basis of the existing water quality in the town. The town would need to declare a moratorium, which it has not done and it would have needed to do that before this application was filed. That, that's the timing and the way that would work.
So, what you're saying, to clarify.
But understand, when you declare a moratorium, that, that is a big financial burden on the town and you're required to basically come up with a plan to fix it and fix it within one year. So, it's a big deal and towns really avoid it.
You kinda did last summer by having people call up and narc on their neighbor and, uh, put restrictions on not watering your lawn after.
All right, hey, okay, everybody, let's just hold the comments, please, hold the comments till it's open to the public to speak. Please, thank you.
Did you not?
Thank you.
I believe the town council did that.
Yeah, town council.
Hey, okay, anybody starts speaking out again, we will ask you to leave. Please, just keep it down until it's your turn to speak. You'll have three minutes to speak, thank you. For a group. That's for a group.
Well, that's the non-agenda item.
That's a non-agenda item. For, for the agenda, it's three minutes per person, five minutes if you're representing a group. Thank you.
Can I just ask one thing?
No, no.
Will the town council be here for that?
Okay, go ahead, Daryl.
The total peak water used for this is under nine thousand gallons a day. So, there is a fire sprinkler system, uh, being installed in the apartment complex and there's adequate water to.
Is that an interior system?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, inside the building. Uh, could you bring up the, do you have any of the elevations?
This one do you want? Right there?
Uh, that's a floor plan, go to the elevation.
Right here?
Sure, that's fine. Those are some elevations of the duplex submitted by the architect, you heard a little bit information on that. That's what they'll look like. Jay indicated some setbacks and some heights and things that we meet, we meet that standard for the town development code. Could you go to the, the other one?
The what?
The other one. Okay, there's the, there's the complex on the south end, the seventeen units that we've mentioned before. Uh, the project meets the height requirements in the town's development code. Also meets the building split, so we can't have more than eighty linear feet of, of building. So, the architects have changed that.
That split there, that was what you're talking about, the thirty feet before? Is there room on the block for that?
Yes. Yeah.
Will any of the hardy's heart be remaining or is that all?
That's all a different chunk of property. That's on the. That's on the other side of this. This is all down the middle of that. This is different.
This is currently RV spaces, correct?
That's a, I'm gonna go ahead and answer that one. Yeah. And we really, you know, at this point, like, wait for your turn to ask and everyone will hear the answer. But I'll do this one, one more time. It's an excellent question and, and the answer is yes and no. There's a portion of the property, the RV park is, the footprint was, as it exists now physically, was approved by the county before it was annexed to the town. Then the owner went through and requested that the town approved the RV park use. He, the property owner requested more than the town approved. They actually pared it back. So this portion, while it's built as an RV park, is not approved as an RV park by the town. And it's not zoned for RV park use. So that's why if you go out there, there are, the RVs are sort of always parked or should be always parked, because they're not, all the way on the west. Because that's the portion that is both built and approved as the RV park use. And that would, yes, nothing about this proposal is changing that. Correct.
So when did that change?
When was the RV park use approved?
Yeah. I know when the RV park was approved, but when did it, when did the rest of the little paved streets have, I mean, RV things? When did that happen that it's not?
I think she's asking about the zone change. When did it change from the RVs to the, that was December?
I think, I think that happened.
It did one in December.
If I try to remember.
When they.
It was in December.
Fire hydrant. Because they did that one time, they did not. I live out.
I can answer your question. When the RV park was built, that wasn't under the town of Lakeview, that was under Lake County. So that conditional use or whatever they did there, I don't know. Got approved. And then after that, in the process, it got annexed into the town of Lakeview. So when I think the annexation was made, that's when the zoning that Jay talked about was made. So when it was made, that that wasn't commercial at that time, or this was going, that's why there's no RV parks there. The RV, or that's why there's no RVs there.
On the, that.
Yeah.
Now, when the pipeline was going in, there was more than what's there now.
Because it was county still.
No, it wasn't.
City was?
Yeah.
Did it, was it, did it become city when they put in the prison?
No, it was way after that.
That was a long time ago.
I, I don't know. Anyway, we can find the date there.
Well, this is off the subject, but give me thirty seconds. I live out there. I've done this all by myself for years. I take care of my property, I pay taxes, I owe this town nothing. But I'm here to tell you why. You can look back on records and Mr. Bo Gartis' wife, he would tell you, for thirty years, I paid sewer water and sewage. And I was going in the city, bloom. This town all got quarantined, shut down, and me quarantined from my own home. And now you're gonna say you're doing all this for these people you're shipping in here? And, and I don't even have a fire hydrant. I'm dead, throw me in jail. Call the cops, Senator. I'm done. I can't fight you guys again. I fought you four times.
Sit down, Calda, it's not over yet.
But I had to pay that bill. I had to pay it. Melba J. Wilkie Calda and Mike Clutchus paid it.
Sit down. It's not over yet.
But you guys, these guys can't answer the questions we need answered. That's what we gotta be.
Can we answer the question of why the person who pays city water doesn't have a working fire hydrant? But yet this building that's coming in and nobody wants to.
I know, I live there.
I mean, why can't we answer that?
All right, hey. Is make recommendations to the city council. And there's a part in what you have that we're gonna talk about where they can.
Well, everybody will have their chance to speak their mind, please. Thank you. Can you go back to that, Daryl?
I'm trying. I'm getting it from upstairs, I'm getting it from down here, I'm trying.
Just a little touch with, as Jay mentioned, on the balconies and whatnot. There was quite a bit of redesign that the architects felt we have, that they have met that requirement. Also on the, on the main floor, they were proposing some. Could we go to the main floor plan? Because that's a consideration for the commission. Anyway, on the main floor, if you look at that in your package, there's some, there's some bicycle parking that's required there.
Is this the one you want?
Yeah, that's fine. Just screwed it up a little bit. I know.
So I'll hold it with this computer, I'm just saying. Nobody upstairs can hear me and.
Okay, in the, in kind of the middle building over on the right, you see that space on the left between two shaded areas. There's some bicycle parking there, the architects felt they could change that bicycles parking a little bit and make the main floor more accessible for your private balconies of private space. At this time, they think they've met the intent of the development code. But that is an option. Also on the building location, that thirty-one feet, I think it comes out to be thirty-one, we can meet that requirement too. So we have, we have no issues with the conditions of approval.
I have one question.
Yeah, you all, we're really close, we're really close to public comment.
I just wanna know, are the balconies facing to the inside or the outside?
They're on the, they're on that. They're on the, U Street. They're on the west side, they're away from the street. They're on the left side of that, of those floor plans. And they're, they're kinda hard to see.
So they'd be like facing towards Reberda?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, so I, I think we've met the requirements, we've met the burden of the, of the development code. And so, that's all we have.
Okay, at this time, we're opening up for public comment. You will have three minutes. It will be timed, one at a time. Let everybody, let everybody speak their mind, please. And let, let them get through it. When the three minutes is up, you're up and we will go to the next person.
One sec, we're gonna get the mic, so people upstairs can also hear. So there, there was a microphone the whole time, it's just, it keeps going on and off. We have these issues, it's just, they're trying, it's just what we got to work.
We got more people that can hold them here.
Don't be too busy, though. I am trying. Podium, please.
And when you, when you step up to the podium, please state your name and.
Address.
And address for the record.
For the record, please. Buck, go ahead.
My name's Buck Magazine, two, two South T's and Tom. So this meeting is not about to approve a homeless shelter, which nobody's saying, we all know what it is.
Correct.
Okay, so that being said, this is a zoning process, correct?
It's a zoning, it's architectural, yes.
Okay, well, we all know what's coming in, we all know what's gonna be brought in. It's gonna be the, the mental health patients that nobody wants to deal with. It's gonna be homeless that are probably from other communities. It's gonna be the drought areas that are probably from other communities that would be shipped here, right across from our ball fields where the little kids play. Which, whose kid's gonna be the first one to touch fentanyl overdose? Get stabbed by a dirty needle? They gotta walk past the school. Whose kid's gonna be the first to get kidnapped from the school? I mean, nobody has answer to that, nobody wants to say that. What more resources, what more law enforcement, what more mental health? What more ambulance service? What more everything are we gonna need? And who's gonna pay for that? Nobody wants to address that either. It's gonna be up on the taxpayers of, of Lake, Lakeview, correct? With all these resources that are stretched as far as they can go. And we're, we're asking them to pay more. So somebody in here may have a medical event, they won't get medical treatment because they're dealing with an overdose in these homeless apartments. And what about privacy laws? I bought my place with a privacy fence behind me with an RV park. Now I'm gonna have a three-story building behind me where there's gonna be God knows what looking down at me and my wife in our bed doing God knows what. I don't agree with that. Oh, God, you're lying. God, you're lying about it.
You're on the record, Buck.
Well, he's on, Ed.
And I appreciate that the bike parking at the, at the apartment complex, because it'd be way easier to find stolen bikes.
Right.
Because that's gonna happen too, when you bring these people in. And now apparently you guys are the zoning guys. So I guess the only way you can stop it is don't rezonate. It's incumbent on you for your community, because this is a detriment to the community. How are these people gonna eat? We have no soup kitchens, we have no golf machines. How are you gonna feed them? So it falls to you guys to, to put your foot down about this. I don't have a problem with the RV park, I knew what it was when I moved in. Now we're gonna put this monstrosity behind me with these people? And as far as the homeless vets, I support our vets a hundred percent. There's probably many vets in this room. There's not very many homeless, are there? Lakeview doesn't have a homeless community. It will when you bring this in. And I see in the paper, they're talking about these managers. I already know the managers. I've seen them, they do, they bring people from out of the area that, that whatever area they come from, don't wanna deal with them anymore. They rent them an apartment here. And when they, when they're done with them, they just, because these people can't comply with the rules, they, they get in an argument, they turn them loose, kick them out of their apartment, and now they're homeless on the streets of Lakeview. So you're gonna import homelessness to our community. So I get, I understand you guys don't get a say in that, but you get a say in the zone. Here, here, stop it there.
Your three minutes are up.
Okay.
And I, I have a question for Buck. Buck, you would know that because you're in law enforcement?
I know, because I'm a human being.
And a law enforcement.
Thank you. Hello. Hello. Thank you. Hi, yes. Hi, my name's Kristy Singleton.
Can you give us just a second? Uh, please, do, do we need answers as they come in?
Nope, just take the testimony as it comes along.
Hi, my name's Kristy Singleton. I work in transportation here for the senior center. We take everybody. We don't just take seniors. We take everybody. And I'm, I'm here to tell you, this is gonna put a huge, huge burden on our transportation system. Not just one little tiny dent in it. We don't have the funds to take these people that are coming here to, to do this. We have a little tiny bit of money, little tiny bit of money to take our people that we take here now. And we're already strapped. And if we take twenty-seven more families, we're, we're not gonna make it. The hospital is already in financial peril. Yeah. Channel ten news was here a month ago and did a story, and it's in financial peril. We're four months on, in getting mental help here. You're on a four-month waiting list. Do you know what that's gonna do if we get, you know, more mental help here? We can't get it.
They just bought the Harry for a building.
Yeah, and they're bouncing checks. We, we cannot have that strain here.
Then why did they spend eight hundred thousand on that?
Don't ask me. But I mean, we cannot have this financial strain in our town. We cannot. We have one grocery store. And they're already jack up the prices so high that we can't afford us. And we have, we get more people here that it's gonna get on the government teat. We can't do it. We just cannot do it. Our people can't, can't survive it. Our community can't survive it. Our town cannot survive it. We just can't. We can't do it. It, we're already stretched so thin, it would hurt our community. Our kids can't handle it at school. Our teachers are quitting right and left. We, we just can't support anymore. We just can't. I don't know why you guys even would consider doing a project like this. Have you been over to the commons? Have you looked at what Clameth Housing Authority does with their? They don't do inspections. If they do, they walk in, they look around, and they walk out. They don't care. They don't do anything. And you're expecting some more? Come on, guys. Pull your heads out and look, take a look. We don't want this here, nobody wants this here.
Okay, your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, I've lived out there.
Cheryl, you have to come up.
Okay. I get to be.
Barb, you're next.
Okay, I've lived out there for twenty-seven years on two blocks from where they're building it.
Name and address, please.
Oh, address?
Name and address.
Cheryl Bickering, two-one-two South S Street. Yeah, I'm like two blocks over from where this is going in. Okay, I've been there twenty-seven years. I live there all by myself. I've never been afraid of living there. But if this comes in, I will be afraid to live there. Serious. I will be worried that somebody's gonna break into my home, so, whatever. And I wanna know about my property value. This will knock my property value down. It's not worth a lot, but it's what I got. My concern. Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. Barb?
Will you film me? I love you. You film me. I love you. I'm Barb Hartnell. I live at two-oh-three South T Street. My question are for you guys. Would you have this built behind your house?
I actually live next to a women's shelter and a halfway house.
Okay, you go look, you go look at where I live. You got livestock right there, you got all sorts of wild animals, you got little kids. Would you have that next to your house?
I do already.
I would not. I am livid with this whole thing. I'm livid. We have little kids at this softball field. Are you gonna guarantee their safety? Are you guys gonna guarantee our safety on T Street and S Street? Because I'll tell you what, you got a whole lot of people over here on T Street who are willing to sue some asses if anything happens to them or their children or their livestock. A whole slew. So I would think about what you're gonna do here. Shame on you guys. I'm done.
My name is Wayne Fisher, and I just, I just have a couple of questions for you. If you guys don't have anything to do with, with anything but just approving this zone change or whatever it is, is that all it is?
So those zones, those zones. Those zones.
Okay, all right. If you can't stop this, who can?
Yeah, who can?
See, if, if we're just, if we're just beating our gums up here, which it sounds like we're doing, another runaround, you can't, you don't have the power to stop this.
I don't have the power to stop it.
Okay, who does?
Council.
See, who does?
Where are they? Where are they?
Give us a name, give us a name.
They cannot, they cannot attend the, they cannot attend this. Because if it does go to council, they need to be clean-minded. They cannot attend this part.
So will it be a special session? That we ask?
No, not tomorrow.
Not tomorrow, but yeah.
Right now.
It, it goes beyond us. This decision of this stuff is not, like I tried saying at the beginning, this is not, this is not our, that's not our level. I, I hear you guys, I understand you guys.
I understand, you probably do.
I, I understand where you guys are coming from. All of us do. We, we do.
Okay, we're talking about three minutes over.
Yeah. I did stop, I did stop. You're, you're stopping, you're stopping.
To be, Mr. Chair, to be clear, the planning commission makes a recommendation. And then an, an appeal would need to get filed to the town council. That's the way that works. Now that said, the same rules apply to them, really, that applies to the planning commission. So, so, I mean, you know, we would go through the process again, but legally, they're really doing the same thing.
Okay, so.
But I, but I will tell you, the other, the other part of this is, is the concerns, you know, that I've heard so far, some of those go to the, you know, the owner-operator, not whether or not the apartment building meets the setbacks and those things.
Who will be absentee owner-operator, right? So we might as well hang it up, because right now, has nobody got in your brain?
You don't.
I'm, I'm not, listen, they're, they're giving them bus tickets from the border up here.
Amen, yes.
Anytime you take, I've heard, oh, this is just for the people in Lakeview. Right. Anytime you take state money, you take anybody the state tells you to take. And believe me, there's some, there's some bad dudes out there. And they're gonna be here. I, listen, we're fourth generation here. This town, this town looks like a damn war zone from what it looked like when I grew up here. This town, this town looks like a damn war zone from what it looked like when I grew up here.
Yeah.
Now what are we doing? There's gotta be somebody that we can go to to stop this. Is this worth? Is it worth shooting the town down for John Kogar to sell a piece of property?
No one's want.
Now, come on. Do you guys want this? Is that what you want? Do you wanna see this?
We have to go and clear mine, sorry.
Okay, give me a name. Give me some names.
Council.
You should be able to tell us who we can go to.
The council.
It's right there on your paperwork also. It's the owner.
It's all in the application.
Anybody in that application.
Another question for this gentleman right here. How many, you designed this thing down there, you guys. How many people are gonna be in it? What's the capacity?
There's, sorry, they are one-bedroom units, so typically it's one or most people per unit.
So how many is that?
That would be somewhere between 10 to 20.
10 to 20 in the building you designed? And then we got the three-story one over here, right?
No idea about that.
You didn't have any plan. This thing is taking all life on its own.
Wait, they say 17 units.
Now, Daryl said there wasn't gonna be any problem down there with water. There's not gonna be a problem with sewer. There's not gonna be a problem with flooding. Give me a break. We're all, this town, have you?
You're at three minutes.
Pardon me?
We restarted your time and you've hit three minutes now.
Can we give me three more?
I guess.
So, do you want to represent a group? You'll go two more minutes.
You got it.
Yeah. Go for it.
Yeah.
You can have mine, Wayne.
Okay. All we're asking for here tonight is a fair shake. How about it? Give us a name of somebody we can go to
To petition.
To air our grievances. I understand you guys are sitting here in the position you're in. We're not up here trying to badmouth you and beat you over the head with this thing. What we're here for is to try to preserve our way of life. What's left of it. Listen, when I, I lived on S Street for years and years and years. We never even locked the door. My kids could get on their bicycle and ride to the swimming pool. You don't do that now. There's gotta be some recourse for us. Shame on you, Daryl, for even being involved in this.
Yes.
Spend the money, have a good time. You ought to be standing up with us against this. This is your hometown too.
It is.
Yes, it is.
It is.
And you're making money.
Don't you care?
I do care.
Now, okay. How many minutes I got left?
You got about 30 seconds.
You have mine, bud.
You got 30 seconds, Wade. Do you need a drink?
It's come down, it's come down to the next thing we need to take is the school board, folks. We're importing these people in here and our quality of life. This is not Portland.
That's where they live here.
This is not Portland.
That's what they want it to be.
That's what I wanted to say, is we are the kindest, most giving community in the world. We'll feed everybody. You with the block, you live next to a homeless place.
I do.
I feed homeless every day.
So do I.
I'm not, we're not evil people.
Just matter, Kelly.
I'm not saying that.
My house is gonna have sale tomorrow.
Give us people in this room a name.
So the project developer is Bogotay Construction? The owner is Matt Bogotay? His number is 541?
No. No, 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 I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about a builder. I've been in the building business myself. I know what he's after. He's after money. I'm talking about somebody that has the power to stop this.
Here's the thing, council does not have the power to stop it.
Who does?
You said it.
No, listen, Wayne. Wayne, listen. They have just the same amount of authority as our planning commission does. That's what people are missing. They have the same authority as what our planning commission has. They don't have any higher up authority. We have to follow the ORSs, we have to follow all the laws.
Then let's put it up in the state legislature.
Hey, go to the state legislation. Go to them.
Wait a minute, I got a plan. Let's all get together and secede from Oregon.
Okay, Wade, your time's up.
Play a war on Oregon. Surrender and apply for 401A. We're gonna have it all.
All right, Wade. We're waiting. We'll just allow for other people.
Give her right here.
Thanks for your time. I appreciate your position. I really do.
Thanks for your input.
But if you come up with a name, I'd like you to give me a call.
What?
I'll give you that name right now.
Okay, thank you.
Longla Wharton. I live out Drew's Reservoir. First off, I'd like to thank Deputy Mangazini. Out of 16 notices this city sent out, obviously he was the only one that replied. And if you turn to page 84, you can read his reply. Now I'd like you to turn to page 4, second section, agenda item, second section. This is how this planning commission can make the recommendation to your county council to stop this. Section 4.3, 4.3.140A, general approval criteria, preliminary plat. The town may approve with conditions or deny a preliminary plat based on the following. And I'm gonna give you that following now. And commissioners, you can't make any decisions if you're ignorant, okay? Are you aware of the Oregon Housing and Community Services Special Strategic Goals of 2017? Anybody in here aware of them? Well, one of their goals is to work to close the affordable rental housing gap for low-income households. If this state and the environmentalists hadn't torn our timber industry apart, we wouldn't have to worry about people being able to afford to live. They have destroyed it. Are you aware of Oregon Housing and Community Services statewide housing plan of 2019 to 2023? It's an, this, Oregon Housing and Community Services is an unconstitutional ex post facto organization, and it puts a high burden on the people and taxpayers of this state and this county. On their last page of this, the items, is their priority for rural communities. Oregon Housing and Community Services will collaborate with small towns and rural communities to increase the overall supply of housing, including increasing their funding housing in rural areas by 75%. As a result of tailored services partnerships among housing and service providers, private industry and local governments will flourish, leading to improved capacity and over-leveraging of resources. There's no jobs in this county that pay enough for this housing. Are you aware of House Bill 3501? Anybody in here? It's an ex post facto law due to the ignorance of this county's jurisdiction, okay? If you look at the bill, it's a bill for an act. And what it says, it's enacted by the people of the state of Oregon, okay? This act of 2023 shall be known and may be cited as the Oregon's Right to Rest Act. Don't we all have a right to rest? Who's supposed to protect that right to rest? That's your city council. They take an oath to the Constitution to protect and defend our rights. And commissioners, that includes the spit that comes out of our mouths they're supposed to protect. But what I find crucial in here is line 13, section 2B. Discrimination of rest allows local governments to redirect resources from local law enforcement. So Deputy Mangazini, you might be out of a job.
Yeah.
Okay? If you got homeless people, I suggest you do like Mendocino County did where I grew up in California. They had a conservation corps, and they took the homeless, they took people out of prisons, and they put them in the forests where they fed them, and they cleaned up the forests, and they paid their debt back to society. Okay, fortunately for us, Oregon Legislature did not finish. They did not vote on this, so it's void on its face, but you need to know what's going on here. When Tina Kotek.
You're over your three minutes.
She's got mine.
She's got mine.
You got one minute left.
When Tina Kotek took office, her goal would, along with Brown, was to force Portland's homeless people on seven different areas in Oregon. Fortunately for the people of Oregon, there was so much opposition to the bill that I just read to you that it failed. Have any of you on this planning commission or any official that's in this office read this House bill? Probably not. The citizens of Lakeview and this county have already made it clear that we do not want nor need homeless housing for citizens or our veterans. Yet here we are again with homeless housing being forced down our throats by the Oregon Housing Authority and the Oregon Housing and Community Services Strategic Goals of 2017 to 2020. And John Kogar, property owner, shame on you, Mr. Kogar, and his agent, Daryl Anderson, Oregon Architecture, Pinnacle Architecture, and a company called BB Development that I can't find any information about on the internet, and they won't answer my emails. If these two projects are allowed to move forward and thus by this planning commission and the Lakeview City Council, what is to stop Kotek or the Oregon Legislature from passing another House bill and bringing Portland or any other large cities homeless people to the city of Lakeview and Lake County? Do any of you understand the huge burden these projects
You're over five minutes.
Are going to put on the taxpayers of Oregon and our city and county? Have you even thought about that?
You're well over five minutes now.
How many people said I could have you in it?
We have a lot of people.
They allowed you to do it as a group, so you got five minutes, and your five minutes is up.
There's a lot of people. Like, there's people upstairs that like to give their talk. They're talking. They want to give everybody a chance to give what they have.
What it comes down to is our city council has an oath of office to protect and defend the Oregon Constitution. It's time we put them on notice. You either defend our rights or we're gonna sue you each one on a personal basis. Imagine, how many people are in here? 50, maybe? Imagine them getting 50 notices that they're gonna be sued on an individual, personal basis if they allow this project to deny us our rights to our property and to our lives. They'll put a stop to it, won't they?
We hope.
My name is Renee Struble. I live at 115 North S Street, so just down the street this. And I just have a question. You guys said prior to that, when you look at the plans, you don't see what happens, you know, you're not looking at that. Well, my question is, it's already been named Freedom House. So how did that not imply something? I mean, I didn't name my house. So I'm just asking, that's just a question. How, how do those?
I don't know why they answered, or why they named their houses.
So, I mean, it's an implication to me.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I I just have a question.
Name and address, please.
Glenda Haskins, I live on Double Eagle Road. I just want to know who's paying BBC, who's paying Anderson Engineering? I mean, who's the money behind this?
Grants.
Out of your tax.
Grants, honey.
So, state of Oregon.
I don't know what.
Who's paying you guys?
And we can't answer that question either.
You don't know?
It's proprietary information.
And I love you, Joe.
It was Grants Road, and they own us now because the money's already passed on us.
Thank you.
I researched that.
I'm Janine Flurry, 204 South T. Janine Flurry, 204 South T. I'm an adjacent landowner. So this property basically is here just over the fence in my backyard. Our neighborhood has always been nice, quiet, low-crime vandalism, nothing. We've stepped together as neighbors. It's been a pleasure to live where we're living. I was under the impression that when Kogar got the RV park for the pipe liners, that once he was, the park was done, everything was to return to its natural state.
That was a condition of the county approval.
Yep.
But that's county.
So I'm just wondering when that happened and when it all got annexed again? And why we didn't know about it, that's for sure. We didn't know about it.
So I was not, none of us was part of the planning when that all got annexed in. You weren't even part of it. So I, do you not have them answers for you? I don't know. That was several years ago. So, yeah. I'm sorry, I don't have that answer of when it happened.
And I also agree, our community does not have the means to support what they are proposing with this housing. Yes, we need housing, but we need family housing. These are only one-bedroom units that will support one to two people. How does that solve our community's housing problems? We're having a problem with medical care, doctor shortage. We depend on travel nurses or doctors to come in. My husband right now has no medical care here because we don't have a doctor that will accept him on. Since we lost Dr. Foster and Thompson, what are we supposed to do for medical care? It's not that easy to just jump in the car and drive to Bend or Clamath or wherever. And then these people, if it is that they are going to require mental health services and everything else, why should we give up our time in order to support them? I really think that in considering this, you need to consider our community. I think there's a lot of other properties around this town that would be much better suited for this type of a situation.
We don't want it. We don't want it.
Well, I don't want it. I don't want it anyway, but I just don't want it in my backyard.
Time's up, thank you, Janine. Laurie, go ahead.
Laurie Dieter, Linda Lane. So I worked at the Department of Human Services for 30 years.
I can't hear you.
Okay. I worked at the Department of Human Services for 30 years, so I saw the homeless come in. I'd be one of the first people. You make a choice to be homeless in Lakeview. So somebody, you know, will have like somebody on Social Security. California is a good place that they came from, okay? And so they would invite people to live with them. And then they would invite more people to live with them and more people. Then they would get in fights with one another. And then they would come to my window and say, what can you do for me? The only thing that I could tell them is go to the senior center, get on the bus, and go to the mission in Clamath Falls. So two years ago, when the McGarvus wanted the homeless shelter there, it was very extensive, and they explained everything to us. There were lots of meetings with the town, okay? And so, losing my train of thought. So this was gonna be a 17-bed facility, okay? One room per, okay? People stack on one another. So it's like one person will get in there and they'll tell their buddy, come stay with me, because this is Oregon housing, okay? You cannot deny anybody to apply for Oregon housing and to get in there, okay? They have eviction rights just like anybody else. So one person could invite a bunch of people and disrupt the whole building, okay? But they have to wait to get the person out before they go through their eviction stuff. The stuff that was in the paper, that was this last week, was just all lies. So it's like, we don't need any more homeless shelters. We've already got the Commons, we've got Aspen Courts. Those are all low-income. We don't need anymore. We have sawmills who are begging for people to get jobs. I was a spokesman for the sawmills. Somebody would come to my window because we did food stamps, medical, cash assistance, what have you. Have you applied at the sawmill? I can't apply the sawmill because I smell hot. A Greenmont Sawmill used to have a waiting list for people to go to work there. Now they're begging for people.
How many people in Lake County are paid by the state not to work?
Well, you know, I don't know that. And you know, the amount of money that people get on cash assistance is so minute And you know, the amount of money that people get on cash assistance is so minute that they are applying for HUD housing. They've got their food stamps, their medical, and what have you. So, the facility they were going to do two years ago is the same thing they're doing now. It is low-income housing, and even though the paper said that it's for Lake County residents, they can't do that. It's a state-run facility.
You've got three minutes.
Okay, so they will bring in-
Thank you. You gave up your time earlier, Duane. Sorry. Anybody else? Anybody else upstairs? Go ahead.
Michelle, if you have anybody in your office that wants to come and speak, could you send them back this way, please?
Hi, guys. Cherie Davis, 97 South T Street. So, I just want to thank you for the time and effort that you've put into looking into these conditions and laws. I won't begin to understand all of the laws that you have to look at when you're trying to decide whether or not you can approve something like this. So, the only thing that I ask of you is that you go through this project with the finest tooth comb you can find and find every single possible loophole under the law that you can find to not allow this. So, that's what I ask of my planning commission. Thank you.
There's no questions upstairs.
One in the back.
Start it.
Hello, my name's Mark Suba. I live at 20560 Kristen Road. It's north of town, but I lived on T Street. T Street is, and always will be, my old neighborhood. The thing is, is we've gone through this, I mean, the T Street residents have been beaten down for the last, I'd say fifteen, twenty years. And it's all hinged upon John Kogar. And all he wants to do is make money. And the thing is, is when we went there, when he was going to bring in the deal for the pipeliners, it was county property. And what ended up happening is the residents, we kind of met halfway. He was to take everything off the surface, you know, remove all the power outlets and all that stuff, and he was going to maintain the fence, the no-seethrough fence, among the other things. Next thing you know, we see that that stuff isn't being followed through. And then he also wants to have the RV park. So, some of us are going, "Hey, wait a minute. What about the agreement?" And we're told, "Oh, well, that was with the county. The property's now the town's. You're going to have to make it up with the town." And so, what I see is, yeah, I'm sorry, you guys are on the planning commission now, but there's a feeling of distrust with what's going on. People are getting sick and tired of the maneuvering and all this and that stuff to try to get what just a select few people are wanting to do.
Yeah, we never even got a letter.
But the other thing is, part of the, part of your job is you're looking at the feasibility, correct, of this project? Well, I mean, well, I'm looking at this and it says, "Water and Sewer, Fire Protection, Town of Lakeview," okay? Thing is, has anybody talked to the Town of Lakeview Fire Department to see if they would be able to provide fire protection or suppression to a project of this magnitude?
This did go to them.
And?
And they sent back that the plans, they had no issues, and the state fire marshal did as well.
Okay. Well, another question is, the applicants, you hear the applicant?
Nope. Nope.
They're not in here.
Well, okay.
Well, are they aware that that ground out over there where these two are going to go in, less than ten years ago during the last flood, that was under two to three feet of water? I know, because I spent seventeen hours when I was with the volunteer fire department, and we pumped water with a fire truck, two fire trucks on Roberta Road, pumped water from the east side, pumped it across Roberta Road to the west side, okay? We ended up destroying a couple of pumps because of all the debris that we were sucking up. Fire engines aren't designed to be sucking up, you know, trash water like that, you know? So, anyway, I mean, that's all I want to say, is I support everybody that lives on T Street. That's why I'm here. And I'm just, I just want to say I'm sick and tired of the BS. Thank you.
What about here in Southside? We've set it up for empty for forty years.
Okay, anybody else?
Setting up there empty for forty years. It's got every mouse, rat, and squatter in there.
Do I say I have time left?
Nope. You were over. You were out. We didn't let you.
So, is this going to the town now? Because the last meeting I was at, you guys said it now goes to the town council. That's what you told me, an officer magazine. Because John Kogar turned around to us and said, "For those who want to know what I'm doing, I'm doing this for the snowbirds."
That was on a totally different project.
No, that, no. Yeah, I, yeah, I know what it was. He liked it, so he was doing something completely different. But anyway, so is that, is this going to go down to the town? So that we can all have meetings?
Not unless it's appealed. They'll make a decision.
But how do we appeal it?
It's in the development code, and Don can provide you the section in the code for that process. There's a process. There's a process.
You can also recommend that it be voided. The city council-
I'm saying, regardless of what the planning commission decides, whether they approved it or denied it, the next process is to appeal it to the town council, right?
They can write a resolution under Health, Safety, and Welfare, have their three meetings, invite all the stakeholders here at all, and if all the objections are answered, they can sign the resolution into ordinance, and the sheriff has to enforce it. They can stop it. That's how they can stop it, but they don't understand their jurisdiction.
If they were doing something like that, it would be outside what we're doing here. So, and I, and that would be a lawyer question, which I am not, so.
We need to have a meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else want to speak? Anybody upstairs or in their offices?
No, everybody in Michelle's office and upstairs are good. They have no questions. Thank you.
Yep. Can I close into the public comment?
It's time. It's time. It's for us, it's not about the money.
Thank you, Wayne.
Okay, you guys can go ahead and start.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, public's all done with their comments. It's back on, Daryl, you guys, you're the only ones that are here. Do you have anything else you'd like to add or say to any of this?
I think our comment would be that, under the requirements of the development code and the town standards, the applicant has an extra burden of approach for this design and view application and the re-apply. And currently, the applicant does not have any concerns on the conditions of approval.
Would you guys like to-
I think that echoes it, and we would just recommend that the commission vote for the little project.
I disagree. How can you rightfully sit there and knowing about Lake County in your conscious mind, I like all you guys, I know all of you, how can you consciously think this is going to better on Lake County?
So, once again, once again, like I said, we have to look at the laws.
I agree with you all that. But like the lady said here, you guys can nitpick, 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 nitpick to get this-
Well, all they do is search and stick, and we nip it.
No, I think you can do more than that.
Anyway.
So, what happens-
If nobody else has, that's when he's done.
This is ridiculous. I hope everybody's proud of this. You guys bring this kind of trash into a small town like Lakeview, that nobody has business doing that. Take them to your town. Take them to the city. We have one town.
Okay, I'm going to close the meeting at this time.
Bye, Tyler.
And you really seriously have to do this.
We didn't have questions.
All right, so you can ask questions of staff at this point. Yes. Yep. Yep. Fireware on it.
No, I do have one. So, what about surrounding conformity or conformity to the surrounding areas? So, there's, I understand two stories. I don't see any three-story anything down in that area or basically kind of throughout town. And so-
So, there, I mean, there isn't a compatibility standard in the code. And if there was, it wouldn't be lawful for this use. We can do compatibility for commercial uses and industrial, and we did, right? But for residential, if it's planned and zoned for a, if it's planned and zoned for a residential use, we can only apply criteria that is clear and objective. So, something like a, you know, three stories are allowed unless it doesn't feel right based upon what's next to it, that's a problem under Oregon law, right?
Or single whites next to it, sorry.
I mean, that's, that's just, so, so, you know, what I would say is, from this, right, we're also in the process of updating the code. Like, if, you know, if as a group, right, as part of a code update, it wouldn't apply to this project, but to future projects, we could look at, and some cities do have like step-up standards, right? Like, you can only, Medford has one of, you can only be so high if you're right next to single-family residential, and you go to multifamily. You can only go so high until you're a certain distance away, and then you can go higher, right? So, but Lakeview doesn't have a standard like that, so we wouldn't have a basis to make them change that part of the plan.
How come it doesn't apply to this project?
Because it's not, it's not, it's not in code right now. It's, it's not in any of-
It's not in our current-
Yeah, it's not in our current codes.
The town is also in the process of drafting a new development code, and so that would be the kind of thing, based upon the testimony, that the planning commission might suggest staff be put in the new code, you know, would be the kind, you can put those kinds of things in the code, but the code, for this application, we have to apply the code as it existed at the time it was filed, which does not have that. Are you guys-
Looking at it.
Wait, that's the first time you've ever said you only have one question. It actually ends with one question. I'm waiting, I'm waiting for part A, B, C, D.
See, I don't know. No, no, I just do have one more. Okay, so, I get residential and multifamily, all that kind of stuff, but is there any kind of different differential between state-run residential housing and like a landlord kind of thing?
Well, okay, so, so the, yes, they're actually separate uses.
Okay.
And so, that is a question that I posed to Matt Bookdig via email, and he responded via email. I specifically asked, because in the development code, there's something called a residential facility, which is a licensed facility, essentially. In, in state law says you must allow, if you, if it's a zone that allows multifamily, you must allow a residential facility up to fifteen units, right? But the, but this project is seventeen units. So, I was like, "Hey, what's going on?" So, I mean, I emailed him, and I said, "Is this a residential facility? Is this a, going to be a state-licensed facility?" And he responded back, "No, it is just a, it's independent living apartment building." So, if that's the case, that, you know, if it's independent living apartment building, then it's not getting a residential facility permit through, I don't know, it's like ORS 463 or something like that, but it's the, it's a DHS statute, and I think it's OER 461, I want to say, maybe? But, but then they have to get a facility permit, and then they would come to the, after the land use approval is done, they would come to the town, probably, they'd give it to Dawn, and then she would send it to me for a land use compatibility statement. And, and, and based upon what was represented in the application, I would deny that, because they didn't apply for a residential facility. They applied for apartment building.
So, if it's a regular residential building-
If it's an apartment building-
Quote-unquote landlord.
Right.
So, there'll be a quote-unquote rental process, rental agreement, rental whatever.
Correct.
So, who sets the rental criteria? The landlord?
The owner, I mean, the owner of the project, correct. Exactly.
Which is? State of Oregon? Is, so, the owner is the applicant in here? Or is-
The owner, I think is the, owner is Kogar of the property, and BB Development is the one who applied for the, for the permit. You know, the, they could, they're going through the land use process, they could sell it to whoever, I mean, at that point, it's an approved apartment building. They could sell it to whoever they want.
Ah, all right. That's all that's been swam on at all of a sudden, too.
I mean, there's no, because what we're doing doesn't dictate, we don't dictate ownership, right? And like I said, I've been involved in projects where this is who it's going to be and blah, 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 and you got it approved, and, for example, they went to the bank, and the bank said, "Yeah, no."
Yeah, yeah.
And then somebody else did the project, and it's the same physical thing that got built, but the, but the who owned it and the way they operated it was a different thing. And that happens. But it's not, that's not relevant to the use. We're just looking at, is it a, but I did confirm it's not a residential facility. It is an apartment building.
But doesn't it say in here there's going to be a therapy room? I'm pretty sure I saw that in here somewhere. And normal apartment buildings don't have therapy rooms.
I mean-
It says that in here somewhere.
They have common rooms, and, I mean, we don't have, I mean, we don't have a zoning regulation against how they would use a common area. But it's not something that requires a DHS permit to operate. And if it did, then this project isn't going to get them very far, because that's not what they got approved for.
Well, it does say that there's going to be a therapy. I would think that would need to be maybe explained in, you know, what exactly therapy implies. I mean, if you guys don't want this project to go through, and I would hope as Lakeview residents that you guys don't want this to go through, then find every little thing that you can find to stop it. Because this is not going to improve Lakeview in any way, shape, or form. It's going to strain everything.
We already went through all the public comments. Thank you.
Does John Kogar still own it? I thought somebody said that-
As when the application says, yes.
Yes.
So, is he the one making the application in BB?
It's both of them. It says right there, it's John Kogar's the owner, and the other applicant is BB.
But he said he sold it last week to the state.
Yeah. We can't tell you until, we'll just go right.
We'll just go to the county and look at the-
So. You got anything?
Tax records that should get recorded as a sole owner.
Ask for motion, bad deliberation, or ask for motion.
So, I, I'm game on the whole privacy screen to add that to it.
The privacy screen?
The privacy screen, lower units.
Speak up, speak up.
Not a bad, so, Ronnie.
Yes.
So, I'm game on the, on the privacy screen to be added to the lower units to make their patios a little tighter. It was one of the, one of the contingencies in there. I, I think that they should have some privacy down there as well, so. And I think that was the only thing that really just needed to be added. That's, that's my thoughts. You got anything there?
No, I totally agree with the screen on your wall.
Yeah.
So, for staff's clarification, what you would want in the, as a condition of approval is that those, the ground floor units would be enclosed and secured.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay? Enclosed in a secured way?
Yes.
Is that the one?
Enclosing. Ronnie?
What?
Anything else you'd like to add? Go ahead.
Well, no, I mean, technically, legally, I know it hits all the marks and does all the Ts and stuff. I mean, I'm against it, it's just me, but in this realm, there's not much we can do, but I, I would say, Wesley, say something.
Kicking back to the council.
Well, you know, we'd have to come up with a decision either way, and then it can go through.
Can I, can I say something, though, to everybody? Is that okay, or is that not?
You're in deliberation, you can generally-
You can make a general statement, so.
We just want everybody to understand what we're, what we're doing here. We don't have the right to choose whether we have it or not, per se. We, we don't have the right to choose whether we have it or not, per se. They, they present the codes, they come up with the easements. All that stuff is, is black and white. You don't have choices. You can't choose because you guys want to...
Doesn't mean we're against you.
I personally...
Does not mean we're against anybody in this room.
It's hard to decide. Or your guys.
Public comment's over, Mark, sorry.
Really?
We're, we're, we're in deliberation.
Right, but if you remember... Greg, if you remember when the pipeliner thing was going, you were new on the, on the...
I wasn't here during the pipeline.
He was not here during that.
I literally, my very worst one was McGarva.
Well, what I'm saying is, the planning commission decided...
None of us were here for the pipeline, Mark, so we can't go back that far.
They decided to, to reconvene. I mean, we walk in here, you guys hand us a book, okay? And everybody's supposed to, in that little amount of time, read through this stuff?
Yeah, welcome to our world.
That was posted on Facebook and on Mark's, and on our town website. I had it posted. I asked for it to get posted.
Do you have something else?
So we can't, we can't do any kind of commission, or condition on... I don't know how to word it.
Who's legs, right? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah. It is, it is, because that would make us... Well, the paper said no sex offenders will live there, and we don't believe that either. Sorry, that is good, though. But is there, so we can't make any of those kind of conditions right at all? We're just here for the building.
Again, not a lawyer, but I think if we called the town lawyer, I know what he would say.
All right, any, any can...
The conditions of the...
The patios.
The patios, and then the streets, bringing everything to city code and everything.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
How did they get annexed into the city via the county?
I just need a motion.
Second motion.
Without anybody knowing? Did you say that?
I'll make a motion. So, I'll be doing, we're doing two, right? So we're going to do...
Yes, we need a motion on the replat, and then a motion, and then a decision. So two, two motions, two separate votes. First on the replat, second on...
So I make a motion on the replating of the spaces to create the two blocks.
I'll second that.
With, with staff recommending conditions of approval. Yep.
I didn't hear what it was, I'm sorry.
So I make a motion to accept the replat with the staff recommendations of approval.
I...
Somebody's going to say it.
I did.
Oh, they did say it.
Go ahead.
Aye. Aye.
Hold on, guys. Greg?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Aye.
Kevin?
Ronnie?
Pete?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous for the replat.
For the second part. Anybody have a motion for the second part?
I'll make a motion...
Way to go.
To accept the building... Site, site design review. The site design review with the staff recommendations of approval. Plus, plus the enclosed in a secure way for the patios on the first floor.
Greg? Derek again?
Aye.
Kevin? Ronnie? Yeah.